To tonight's city council meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Councilor Giliboff.
Here.
Councilor Fisher.
Yes, whoops, sorry, I made a name. I'll wait till I get mine.
Councilor Kennedy.
Here.
Councilor Powers. Councilor Reisch.
Here.
Councilor Scamperly.
Here.
Corn present.
Councilor Powers asked to be excused because he was unable to change his work schedule. Is there a consensus of the council to excuse Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yep.
I don't think he necessarily has to be though. That's only for regular meetings, correct? Is that, is that correct, Sarah?
Uh, you know, I don't know, Kathy.
Pretty sure.
We'll look it up.
Anyways, we excuse you.
Yeah, we'll look it up.
There we go. Our first item of business is a resolution appointing a deputy mayor for the city of Augsburg for 2020 to 2021, bill number one, and I will introduce that. Whereas the Augsburg City Charter provides that a deputy mayor is to be elected from the city council members at the first council meeting in January of even numbered years. Now therefore be it resolved that Councilor Reisch is hereby elected deputy mayor of the city of Augsburg Council for 2020 to 2021, I so move.
I'll second that.
May I have a safe discussion?
Oh, I forgot.
That's all right.
Is there any discussion? Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councilor Giliboff.
Yes.
Councilor Fisher.
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy.
No.
Councilor Reisch.
Yes.
Councilor Scamperly.
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you, I'm honored.
Thanks, Lisa, Sarah. I sat right over there, I had it for the last two years. Four years.
Our next item of business is a resolution establishing new procedures for the introduction of resolutions, local laws, and ordinances to come before the Augsburg City Council, bill number two, and would someone care to introduce that?
Yeah, this is just a resolution to establish procedures for the introduction of matters before the city council, and the idea here is typically the councilors are asked to read the resolutions, which I think they should be read by staff. I think it's more appropriate coming from staff, maybe a staff report along with it, why are we considering this? So all that does is just change, change the procedure so that the appropriate department head or the city clerk or the city manager read the resolutions, local laws, ordinances coming before the city council. I so move.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
You need a second. You need a second.
First of all, I'm not going to support this. I think that we would be the first parliamentary entity in the history of the Western world where lawmakers don't read their own laws that they're proposing. I think it's ridiculous. I think this is our job. This is what we got elected for. We need to do our job here. I don't know if people are afraid to read the resolutions or what. You can read them by summary statement if you need to. Staff is required, of course, to give any kind of explanations or summaries if we need them, but we're the lawmakers. This is what we're elected to do. We, we read these. In the city charter, AR seventeen, procedures of the city council meeting, section B, general rules, two point one three, business, policymaking business, which is everything on the agenda is to be conducted by the elected officials, you know, so therefore this resolution is violates the charter. So I don't see how we can even vote yes on this.
Yeah, as it says, section C sixteen, it says that the city council shall determine its own rules of order of business for its meeting, and I think the resolution stipulates that if we need to, we can amend that and just directly that it be done that way. So that would address that section order requirement.
Right.
And I've listened to other meetings, both the county legislature and the villages, I've listened to those meetings. We're elected to vote on laws, not to read them, and I just think it's more appropriate coming from staff. It's okay if we disagree, that's just my thing.
I have to say, I stand with Dan on this one. I like the way, the way he's always done things the right way. I personally like introducing it because it's something that, you know, if I'm going to support, I have no issue reading it aloud to everyone so that they can hear it and I'm in support of it. So I would have to be with Dan on this one.
As it says also that in the resolution, upon completion of the presentation, the mayor and councilor, councilor may introduce a proposed resolution, local authorities. So it's still coming back into our court, no matter what's being read.
Right.
So regardless, it's not a matter of whether or not we want to read it or not read it. I support it.
Yeah, I support it too. I think the clerk, whoever.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Giliboff.
Yes.
Councilor Fisher.
Yes.
Councilor Kennedy.
No.
Councilor Reisch.
Yes.
Councilor Scamperly.
Uh, no.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business is a resolution to implement a hiring freeze for the city of Augsburg, bill number three, and would someone care to introduce that?
A resolution to implement a hiring freeze for the city of Augsburg, whereas the city of Augsburg has the highest tax rate of all counties in New York, in New York's, North Country, and one of the highest tax rates out of sixty-two cities in New York State. Whereas the city of Augsburg carries close to reaching its constitutional tax limit specified in the New York State Constitution. Now therefore be it resolved that the city, the Augsburg City Council hereby eliminates all funding for current and future unfilled positions in the 2020 budget, thereby implementing a hiring freeze, and be it further resolved that the city manager shall not fill any current or future vacant positions in the 2020 budget nor any newly proposed positions, and be it further resolved that any contractually obligated current and future unfilled positions shall not be filled, and be it a resolution to fill the position to the city council for consideration. I so move.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. So, uh, do you want to go first? Go ahead. So basically, I think we're out of our lane here, and when I look at the charter, the city manager, of course, has all administrative doozies with the hiring and firing, and I think this is an interference of administration. But secondly, more importantly, I'd like to see, I agree a hundred percent, our taxes are way too high. I'd like to see them come down. I'm with you guys on this, and I want to work on this, please. But I think that before you go voting on something like this, not only take that into consideration, but also, you know, the, the impact, the economic impact in terms of overtime and in terms of public safety. Now, when we've done this in the past, I've been on the board for ten years, we usually just, we discuss it with the city manager. The city, and I've done this with three different city managers, the city manager, that way we're not interfering. Comes back with an analysis of the economic issues when we consider overtime, things like that, public safety. Sometimes I've seen the fire chief speak to issues with the fire department. The fire, fire chief wasn't, isn't happy about the fact that we just got rid of four positions in the, in the fire department in this budget, you know, coming up as, as they come along, and he's upset about the public safety there, and I don't blame him, man, but I just think that a little bit more insight and education on our parts by the department heads and the city manager is needed, and I think we should hold off on this before we continue, so.
I, I think we will have that in the future, but we, we've just came into office and we've got some time.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I guess my concern also comes to like, does this mean that we're not going to open the pool because we're not going to be able to hire white folks, or does this mean that we're not going to be able to run our city direct youth programs in the summer? Does that mean all of that stuff goes too? Because now we have a pool that sits there that isn't used. I guess my concern is, you know, we've all talked about quality of life in Augsburg, and I think that that would be a detriment, is if we do this, then we can't open the pool. We can't have, you know, for our under, you know, the youth in our community that go to the parks and utilize a lot of these programs, how are we going to reach them if we're not able to hire? How are we going to staff our marina? Like, that's where my major concerns come in, come into play because, you know, we're, we're quick to point out everything that's wrong in our, you know, found by the river, and if we're not able to replace these positions to hire them, how do we expect our DPW or parks and recs to operate without them?
Those, those jobs are farther down the line. They're summer jobs, and we'll know where we're going by then, but for right now, we just want to put a hold on things until we do know everything about the budget and talk to the department head, so this isn't forever.
So you're just asking for a temporary hold?
Yes.
I guess, I guess my issue with the temporary hold is nowhere is this an area to say it's temporary, and second of all, how do we know that in four months we're going to revisit this again? It, it doesn't say this is a temporary issue. This doesn't put a timeframe on it. This is good till April. That's my concern is that once this is voted in, it doesn't have to be changed.
It, it can be revisited at any time by another resolution.
I just disagree with the fact that, you know, to, I agree that in one sense, we do need to minimize positions, like we've done this negotiating the fire department contract, and a lot went into that, and, you know, departments are running thin as it is, and I don't disagree that we shouldn't necessarily go refilling everywhere, but um, the only way I'd be able to support this is if there was some type of stipulation in it, in wording that dictated, you know, what would be included or not included as far as the summer help, because I would be really concerned.
Well, let's put a freeze on until April first.
Well.
For now.
We'll, we'll just revisit it in the future when we get closer to that time, when we'll revisit it, when, you know, four new people to the council really know what's, what's going on with, you know, the necessary employees and the department heads. It'll, it, it can be revisited at any time with another resolution.
Yeah, well, it's going to have to be.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, that's completely, I, I won't support it as it's written now, but that, I mean, I'm one, I mean, so I won't support it as it's written, but.
Is it possible to amend it, to put an end date on it, because otherwise it is good for the entire year, and you don't have to revisit it. I have a bunch of questions about this. We've got recruitments that are already underway for the position of fire chief, and I'm not certain how we run the fire department without a fire chief. Maybe some of the folks in the room here have a better idea of that than I do. I also don't know whether this applies to the library and the Remington, because they are employees, city employees on loan to the library and to the Remington, and the Remington has already started recruiting for a new executive director. So I'm not sure how this gets implemented.
As it says in the last part of the resolution, any contractual or future unfilled positions shall be not filled without bringing a resolution to fill such position, that would come back as a resolution, and then we would decide. So I don't know, we can get to the same place without having to put an end date on it, and we said we'd go back and look at it.
All right, I, I think I'll be back next week on the fire chief and the Remington director.
Yeah, we can, I mean, it's not like we're out, not meeting twice a month, and we'll just discuss it, and when, when it's necessary, we'll bring it back up and address it.
I would like to make a motion to at least table this until our next meeting, just for the simple fact that we just got this information on Friday late in the afternoon, and we really haven't had, I personally would like more time to divulge into it and look into some more, so I would like to make a motion to table this until next Monday, so that we could maybe do a little more homework on it, because this coming in Friday, I have two kids all over the weekend. I didn't get enough time to really be able to, you know, as of now, I don't support it, but I would like to do research further, so I'd like to make a motion to put this off until our Monday meeting.
I'll second that.
I don't see any hurry, waiting one more week to, so we could be a little more educated on it.
Yeah, but, but I don't want to go and hire a fire chief in the next week either.
Would, like, would it, is it proper?
I'm not going to support tabling. I think there's been ample time to review it pretty straightforward. Basically, so we're not hiring anybody right now. Anybody who sits on the council has the ability to bring up an issue or a position or anything else at any given point in time, and management can do the same thing. We're just very concerned about the tax rate, as you know, during the campaign.
Which is understandable, but in the same sense, we haven't had, you obviously have put this together, and you've done your research on the matter, where I would just like the ample time to be able to do so, to make an educated vote for the people that I also represent. That's all I'm asking for, is so that I can make an educated vote into this. I just feel like you guys have had a lot of time, and you guys have put a lot of thought into this, and I respect that, and I would like to be able to vote on it with having all of my information, and that's all I'm asking for with my motion. But you guys can, if I vote on it tonight, I'm going to say no, so that's just, we need to vote on that. We do.
We voted on.
So, so first, you want to, is there any more discussion on the amendment, or, excuse me, the, the, uh.
Motion to table.
The motion to table.
No.
So that's what you would ask?
Is there any more discussion?
So now you ask her to call the roll on the motion to table.
Could the city clerk call the roll?
Councilor Fisher.
No.
Councilor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilor Reisch.
No.
Councilor Scamperly.
Yes.
Mayor Skelly.
No.
Councilor Giliboff.
No.
Denied.
So now you call the roll on the, on the resolution.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Councilor Kennedy.
No.
Councilor Reisch.
Yes.
Councilor Scamperly.
No.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councilor Giliboff.
Yes.
Councilor Fisher.
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business is a resolution directing the city manager to prepare a five-year projection on tax rates, bill number four, and would someone care to introduce that?
Let me do that. Whereas the city of Augsburg's tax, tax rate is one of the highest tax rates out of all the sixty-two cities in New York State, and no strategy has been developed to address this problem, and whereas the city of Augsburg is precariously close to reaching its constitutional tax limit as specified in the New York State Constitution. Now therefore be it resolved that the city, Augsburg City Council hereby directs the city manager with assistance of the city comptroller to prepare the following. A five-year budget projection beginning in two thousand twenty-one and ending in two thousand twenty-five that estimates future tax rates based on current staffing levels, adopted contracts, anticipated increases in health insurance costs, overtime projections that are based on historical data, anticipated capital needs, zero increases in real property assessments, zero increases in sales tax collections, and any and all other data that is typically used in the annual preparation of the city's budget, and be it further resolved that the city manager shall deliver and present these tax rate and budget projections to the city, Augsburg City Council at its January twenty-seventh, two thousand regular scheduled meeting. I so move.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Should I lead it off with that? All right, boys. So here's, here's my issue here. Number, I got a couple of issues. First of all, just a prepared budget, I know it takes months, all right, and, and I don't even know if this is possible, five-year projected budgets. And then the second issue that I have is, in this resolution, you've got, you, you mentioned that you want the city manager and team to anticipate increases in health insurance, overtime, current contractual increases, whatever, but yet on the revenue side, you have zero increases in sales tax or real property assessments, you know, and so first of all, I don't think the timeframe is good enough, as I said, but second of all, you're, you're asking for a projection with increase, excuse me, increases in expenditures, but no increase in revenues. So it's not even a realistic thing that you're asking for. It's not a real budget. Our real, our assessment and our assessor has been tasked with trying to create a more level playing field in this town when we hired her about a year ago, and I think that she's working on that, and we're going to see some assessments increase and things of that nature. And how could you ask for five years of budgets and not ask for this, this other aspect based on traditional, you know, anticipated increases as well in, in terms of the revenue? I just don't think it's fair. I think that you're coming up with, you're going to have meaningless information if you're only looking at an increase in expenditures and not revenues. What are you going to do with it? It's, it's useless information, and as it stands, I'm going to vote no on it, unless you can convince me otherwise. So I started discussing.
We think it's important to get these projections to understand where we're going. We think the current situation is not sustainable. All we've had over the past four years are tax increases, with the exception of this year, where it was held the same, which, which I don't think is acceptable. Health insurance costs are going up. Contracts have been adopted. Those are going up. There's no strategy as far as staffing levels. Overtime projections have, overtime has gone up, and we're just asking for it to be based on historical data. We're going to have capital needs. We're not in favor of real property assessments, and one of the things that we ran on was to take a look at that as well, and maybe do it every five years, and not keep raising everybody's assessments. So that's why that's in there. Sales tax are flat and are being threatened to be severely reduced by the county, so I think a zero increase is reasonable. The increases that we have had were the result of the county's increase in the one percent sales tax. So we just want to see what that looks like. We're not saying, you know, it's not that we're going to vote on it, we want to see what those numbers look like. So it's reasonable data to request, I think.
You want to see what the anticipated increases are without, without the expenditures, without the revenues?
Well, what, what revenues are going up?
Well, I mean, you're going to, you're going to have tax assessments, property assessments that are going to go up. Who knows what's going to happen with sales tax? That's probably going to, we got two people representing Augsburg that are out to take that money away from us right now, which is a big, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you on the tax rate by any means. I want to work on this with you guys. I just, I don't, is it even possible, Sarah, to come up with this?
Well, as I was going to say, we spoke to Sarah, and she didn't say it wasn't possible.
Do you think it's possible to have this?
We'll do the best we can.
And I think, you know, one of the things we should ask for, and we don't have to do it through a resolution, is a five-year comprehensive plan, which would be a little bit more reasonable, I think, for the city and the status and where we want to go, and that's something that's mentioned in the charter, and it kind of gives us direction of where we want to go, what we want to do. It includes a lot of the stuff that you mentioned, you know, capital needs and things like that, and it's, it's usually not a pretty picture, and we do see one, but we, we know we got to do, and I think that's a little bit more in line with what you guys are asking.
No, I think.
Wouldn't this help us get a plan?
Yeah.
After we have this.
I think it, it could. I worry about you holding on to a deadline and saying, well, you didn't have it, or, I, I just don't, I don't see the, the reason for the deadline either.
It's a, it's a projection, it's, you know, uh.
When was it, when was the last time it was a plan?
A comprehensive plan? Oh, we see them here and there. I don't, I can't remember.
Five years ago?
Probably got it on here somewhere.
Are you talking about a budgeted comprehensive plan or just a comprehensive?
Where we're going as a city in terms of, a lot of, it includes budgetary work, you know.
Is Andrea Owen the last one was done? Is she here?
I am here. I'm watching your recording.
The last one I saw was like, pretty old, so just curious to be known.
Well, I guess to Counselor Scamperly's point, I'm not quite sure what, what you're referring to as a comprehensive plan. I mean, there's a comprehensive planning document, which is a standard community planning document, that you're shaking your head and not knowing.
No, the comprehensive plan that talks about housing and other things in the future of the city, where we're going, things like that.
Which is a comprehensive planning document. It doesn't talk about the budget of a city. It talks about your housing goals, your community vision, it talks about your regulations and things of that nature. It does not talk about capital needs. It does not address budgetary needs. It does not discuss water and sewer rates or user fees. There's no budgetary component typically part of a comprehensive plan. It's a community planning document that sort of establishes a baseline for where you are and where you want to go, and typically about ten years. The city does not have, we utilize our LWRP as our comprehensive planning document, because that is a citywide plan, is planning documented. That's what we have historically used. The city has never had a traditional comprehensive plan. We have always utilized our LWRP.
Can you spell out LWRP, please?
Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan.
Yeah, it's been around for years and doesn't do anything, but anyways, so the comprehensive plan was probably done last in like the eighties or so. I mean.
Like I said, we have a, a local waterfront revitalization plan that has been in place and adopted. The last one that was adopted by the state, federal, and local governments was in, was in nineteen eighty-six. We updated it in two thousand eleven, and that is pending adoption at the state and federal level, after which point it will come to the council for local adoption. And I have to respectfully disagree with you, counselor. I think that it is imperative that the community maintain that status. It is through the LWRP that the city is eligible for substantial state and federal funding that we would not otherwise be eligible for. Not every community has the ability to be an LWRP, and the rules and regulations that are put in the LWRP document are applied to every entity in the city regardless of their status. So for example, the Bridge and Port Authority is not, does not have to adhere to our local zoning laws or building code, but they do have to abide by the rules and regulation and the vision that is outlined in the LWRP. So does all, so do all federal government entities in, in the city, and all entities of the state. So I, I disagree with you. I think that it does have immense value for this community.
Okay, so we don't have one, and this is probably a good way to get started on, on working on one.
It's something that is a little far-reaching, but what does it hurt to attempt it? If Sarah, she seems willing to give her best shot, so, you know.
Okay.
Just the lights on late and just work a lot harder than.
Did you say later?
So how many, how many man hours do you think something like this will take? Or woman hours, sorry.
I'm not going to go there. Sorry.
I just don't think it's, it's going to give you some real, real figures. It's anticipated increase in expenditure, but that's it. And that's what we need to take into account, you know, if we're going. And that's what we need to take into, if we're going.
I mean, that, the wage increases, the contracts are out there, they're six and seven. This is five. I think health insurance has been pretty well, is able to be determined somewhat because it's, you can see the trend from previous years. And as far as not taking in new revenue, well, if we take in all this information, then we would kinda have a feel for what we would need for revenue in the future. You know? And we could start playing into growth that we need in the city to pay for it. New homes, new businesses.
Wind broke, new business.
So, I mean, I think if we get into it, and it becomes, it's not working, then we could discuss it then. Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabod?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
No. Approved.
Our next item of business is a resolution directing the city manager to prepare a five-year projection on water and sewer rates. Bill number five. Would someone care to introduce that? Anybody, anybody?
Yeah, this is essentially the same, and then the other component of the taxes, of course, is, is, I mean, you're assessed fees for water and sewer. Where we've entered into contracts for expansion of the sewer plant. This says thirty-five point nine million. I guess it's closer to forty-four point something million. And so this directs the manager and the comptroller to prepare the same types of estimates for water and sewer based on that project as well as other costs associated with it. And that's important to us to understand as we start out this process, because we don't have that information at this point in time. And we need that to make decisions moving forward, so I move that.
Is there any discussion?
Just like.
Getting a little ahead of myself on doing. I, oh, go ahead. I, I think you've worked on some of that already, your, from the sewer plan. I think you have some projections out farther as a, as a starting point. Do you, Sarah?
We have some debt service projections, but that's, that's only part of the equation.
Do we have any information on how our partnership with Hubelton could affect this, and what we will be taking in from them, and how that would affect? Um, 'cause that, that is a potential source of revenue, that is for revenue for us.
Yeah, we just got a check today for just under five hundred thousand, so.
It's interesting to see how that would play into, with, you know, when we voted on that, as a source of revenue. If we're gonna have this wastewater treatment side, that's supposed to be the latest and greatest of wastewater treatment centers.
Yeah, of course. I'm not sure where the line is drawn between projection and speculation.
Do you think, do you think it's possible?
I, I'm not sure. I, because I, I know we're very concerned about not speculating, so.
I, 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 I mean, I would've asked for that information before I go in on approving it. I wanted to know what the revenue is as well as the expenses and what the impact was on the taxpayers. So I think it's kinda after the fact right now, and I'd like to have that information.
Do, do DANK be very involved in this? Do you think they might have some?
Oh, undoubtedly, they can provide some assistance with this, yes.
Would it be possible to maybe?
I, I just know that for all, for, that for both of these resolutions, there's gonna be a lot of assumptions that have to be made. So, as long as we know that, I mean, just sitting here right now, I can tell you that on the previous resolution, it discussed anticipated capital needs. Well, there's a difference between anticipated capital needs and actually funding them. We don't fund them. So for that one, there's gonna be zero in there.
Well, for an example, you have capital needs for motor vehicles. We've already had discussions and have a proposal, I think, for these vehicles.
But there's a whole lot that has to do with buildings and infrastructure that we're not doing, because we can't afford it. So the assumption will be made that that's still not being done.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. I guess I'll make the assumption that we can do the water one two ways. One, without addressing the capital improvement needs there, and the other with. Or I can spare myself that work and assume that we're not gonna do that one. Because that one hasn't really gotten out of the starting gate yet, so.
So there's like, DANK's already working on capital improvement needs for water as well, and that's kind of in its infancy right now?
No, DANK hasn't really done much of any work on that. There's been, there is a draft preliminary engineering report on the, on identifying the capital needs. It's draft, because it has not, it, it got put on the back burner because of the amount of reviews that needs to be done. And at a certain point, it didn't make sense to do it with the outgoing city council.
So we would just do the water as, not, not do the project?
As is, yeah.
There is no project planned right now. That makes sense.
It's not, it's not even out there, so, yeah, okay.
I think that can, I think it'd be, and, and it's a projection, but there is, there is information out there. And, and DANK may have worked up a lot of this already, we, so.
Yeah, it's important to understand too that this, this, this facility, this wastewater treatment, was in crisis mode. I mean, it was, there was a couple of chlorine tanks down there that if they went, everybody, three mile area is dead in seconds. It's, it's, I mean, this, this is a pretty important project. We had to do this. And not really that, we're turning this into something that's gonna be a revenue generator. We're gonna create a sewer district, and when we get started with you guys, hopefully, we can create a water district. And who knows what's gonna happen with expansion?
I like that. The only thing I can say is that if it was such a crisis, then we shouldn't have put it off to do the.
I agree.
She agrees.
You know, I mean, it's like, people were in danger, it was like, you know? And so, you know, we held off and did another study, and, and there was a, there was a danger. Any, any more discussion? Anyone?
No.
Would the city clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillabod?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Approved.
There is a need for executive session to discuss current litigation from which there will be no action. And I need to recuse myself. I will need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Mayor, before we adjourn, I just have a question. Is there really a need for us to go into executive session? It's already been out to the public light as to what our executive session is concerning. Is there a need to use executive session for that?
I, I, I believe so, because I, I'm staying out of it, and that's how I'd like to approach it. You know, for council to go in and, without me, and decide on this. I, I, I'm very concerned about a conflict of interest as mayor, and I don't want anything to, to come between my governing as mayor and the litigation.
And I, I respect that, I do. But my concern is, is to, by the details of an executive session we're given to, the reason for the executive session is because it's not information that's ready for the public, for you to bypass the executive session to give that information. That's where I see the issue.
I, I really would like it that way and, and stay out of that.
I guess my, my, my issue not be staying out of it. My issue is that the executive session is for us to be able to talk about it before it's been given to the public, and you bypassed the city charter and gave the information.
Because he's new and he made a mistake.
But it's something as you were talking about.
And he was trying to be honest about it and bring it forward, and we're not talking about the details of the litigation.
I would just prefer that in the future, that items for executive session are kept executive session until we are able to release that information. I just think for everybody.
Along the same lines, whether you wanted to executive session to discuss contracts with various units. You're disclosing what you're going into executive session for, so this isn't a lot difficult.
And I really wanna be transparent.
And like I said, I, I respect the fact that you're being transparent. I just, the reason for executive session was to discuss current litigation. I think that's enough. It doesn't need to be divulged. You can just recuse yourself. I just feel strongly on that. No, this is my own issue. I just wanted to put that for the record.
Is the city attorney here, Greg?
He's supposed to be here.
I'd like him to join us.
Yep, yes, so is he.
Do you have to make a motion for the city attorney to join us, to make the vote on that? Call the roll for that? Dan, if there's any, is there any objections?
I don't know.
Any objections to bring in the city attorney?
Consensus to bring in the city attorney?
No, he's coming.
Good, good.
Yeah, he was asked.
So you, did somebody motion?
Yes.
To go into executive session? Do we expect action out of this?
Excuse me, the, the mayor can't make the motion.
He can't.
We need someone else, somebody else. Thank you. And you'll second.
You don't expect action out of that?
No. Well, I don't think so, anyway.
Okay.
I guess we'll have to call the roll for executive session.
Oh, would the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly?
Upstain?
Counselor Dillabod?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
Thanks, everybody, for attending.
Do you need to adjourn? Go ahead and read it.
All, all those in favor?
Laws, I'm law, I got laws.
Because there will be no action.
Everybody gets confused on this.
Since there will be no action from executive session, I will make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Closed? Adjourned, I guess.